Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular City Commission meeting for October 4th, 2021. David, can you give us a roll call, please?
Mr. Young, I mean Mayor Young.
Here.
Mr. Wilkinson? Mr. Badway? Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
You had one job, David, you never messed it up. Here for invocations, and I would like to welcome Father John Lansworth from St. John Catholic Church.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Let us pray. Lord Jesus, you speak to us in these words, "Where two or three are gathered in my name, there am I in the midst of them." Lord Jesus, the tensions that envelop us are heightened and easily cause us to lose peace of heart and mind. The stress of the last eighteen months of this pandemic and the isolation and loneliness that many are experiencing because of it can cause us to lose hope. A grateful heart silences a complaining voice. Lord, we are grateful that 150 years ago on September 12th, 1871, pioneers of great resilience and hope established and incorporated this city we now call our home, El Dorado, Kansas. Lord, we are grateful for our city's history, and we ask you to bless our community in the days, months, years, and decades ahead. Lord, bless our Mayor, Bill Young, and Commissioners Wilkinson, Guthrie, Lewis, and Badway. Bless our City Manager, David Dilner. Bless all of the staff of the City of El Dorado. Their names may not be remembered 150 years from now, but their service and decisions that they make impact future generations. Give them wisdom and guidance, though, Lord, during these challenging times, so that the decisions they make will benefit not only the citizens of this community presently live here, but for the generations of those who will come after us. This prayer we make in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father John. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So next on the agenda is Proclamations and Recognizations, and we do have a proclamation this evening. Whereas the service provided by pastors to their families is unique, they safeguard the spiritual well-being of the members of their congregation, reach out to the surrounding community, and whereas pastors invest themselves in the majority of their family's lives in the ministry, facing the pressure of sometimes unrealistic expectations to be the ideal role model for their congregation, to be available whenever a member needs assistance, to have all the answers and to provide counseling, comfort, and instruction under intense pressure to be right. And whereas because a pastor represents many things to a congregation: leader, spiritual guide, visionary, shepherd, overseer, teacher, and preacher, the month of October is set aside as Pastor Appreciation Month, and the second Sunday in October is designated as Pastor Appreciation Day. And whereas it is appropriate for the El Dorado community to set aside a special time to recognize and affirm the blessings El Dorado-area pastors are to their congregations, "And I will give to you pastors according to mind and heart, which shall feed you with knowledge and understanding," Jeremiah 3:15 from the King James Version. Now therefore, I, Bill Young, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Clergy Appreciation Month. In witness thereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed the fourth day of October 2021. So a big thank you to all of our clergy and all of the work you guys do throughout our community. Next item on the agenda is Personal Appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5 o'clock PM on Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only; no action will be taken. And it doesn't appear that we have any personal appearances scheduled for this evening. So we'll move on to public comment. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items that are not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction, the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Do we have anyone here for personal comment tonight? Or public comment tonight? Come on up.
Leon Leishman. I live at 1915 Quell Run, president of the Main Street Board, and I just have something I'd like to say to you very quickly. As president of the El Dorado Main Street Board, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly express our gratitude towards the Mayor, City Commissioners, and City Staff for their efforts in completion of the agreement with Evergy for the completion of underground utilities in downtown El Dorado and the CB grant for 142 North Main. The El Dorado Main Street Board firmly believes that these projects will bring new opportunities to the downtown district and further enhance the district's ability to sustain and look forward to a broader future. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. And ladies.
Thank you.
Leon? Leon, I've got a question for you. On the Main Street Halloween, it's going to be on Friday?
Friday and the 4th. That was agreed to by everybody's...
And if the businesses are going to hand out candy, do they have to do an application?
We have a process where they're going through that, and our committees are working on that. I am in charge of that committee, but Jackie Quarsh is what we're doing most of the work.
I heard about that today. I was just going to find out more.
And hopefully, we just keep hoping we don't get told like we did last year that because of the situation with the virus that we can't have. We got interviewed by Channel 12 over that when we shut down the cricket street down Main Street. That was, they were very, the public was very upset over that, but nothing else we could do.
So the 29th?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay.
Five to seven?
I believe that's correct. There are several interesting things going on with that. For the first time, the Baptist Church is working with us on that. They're going to have a trick-or-treat down the trunks of their cars in their parking lot that are, you know, beside the church and behind the Victory Academy deal. They're going to actually give out candy from the trunks of their cars. So there's a lot of things going on.
Good.
But again, thank you, guys, for all the...
Thank you.
We appreciate you, and we really appreciate the work the Main Street does. Any other public comment? Seeing that there is none, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. On tonight's Consent Agenda, we'll consider the approval of City Commission Minutes from September 20th, 2021, and the Special City Commission Minutes from September 15th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move that Consent Agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so we've got the next five items on the agenda, or some public hearings. So we're going to open each one of these individually, and if we have comments during the public hearing, please feel free to come forward. So the first public hearing, Agenda Item Number 12, is condemnation hearing concerning 624 North Atchison Street. We'll go ahead and open that public hearing. Is there anybody here to comment on the condemnation concerning 624 North Atchison? Seeing that there is none, we'll close that public hearing. We'll open Agenda Item Number 13, the condemnation hearing concerning 513 West Fifth Avenue.
That's number 10.
Agenda Item Number 10. Okay, Agenda Item Number 10. Condemnation hearing concerning 513 West Fifth Avenue. We'll go ahead and open that public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on 513 West Fifth Avenue? Seeing that there are none, we'll close that public hearing. Move on to Agenda Item Number 11. Condemnation hearing concerning 519 West Fifth Avenue. We'll open that public hearing for 519 West Fifth Avenue. Is there anybody here that would like to comment? Seeing that there are none, we'll close that public hearing. Move on to Agenda Item Number 12, condemnation hearing concerning 814 North Railroad Street. We'll open the public hearing for 814 North Railroad Street. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on that? Seeing that there are none, we'll close that public hearing, and we'll open Agenda Item Number 13 now, condemnation hearing concerning 320 West Tuana Avenue. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for 320 West Tuana Avenue. Come on up.
I purchased that house, and I knew there was fire damage.
We need your name and address.
My name's Kevin King. Address 625 North Atchison. I purchased 320 West Tuana with the intensive, it's in time rebuilding it. I knew there was fire damage when I got it. I started talking with Scott Peachin about what I needed. He said I needed a structural integrity report to start with. I went and got the structural integrity report. All I told the guy at the structural integrity office was it had fire damage. The city's requiring a structural integrity report in order to start working on it. So he showed up. I wasn't even there when he showed up. I was out of town at the time. Had somebody else let me in. He walked through, took his pictures, did his measurements, you know, he wrote up the report, sent it to us. I ended up giving it this, well, had somebody else give to Scott because I was busy, and, you know, they asked, what do we need to get started? He says, you need to just get working on it. Didn't tell us we needed a permit or anything like that. So foolish me, I didn't triple-check and went out there, started working on it, rebuilt the back wall, started, you know, doing stuff. I know it's not in the greatest shape, and Scott believes that the west part of it was an add-on. According to about the 20 tax records, it wasn't. The foundation on that side's a little rough. I have a 20-foot I-beam, three 20-ton jacks to lift it up. I was going to tear out the foundation on that side and put in suitable foundation, you know, concrete, whatever I had to do to get it appropriate, and fix it so it was livable. And I filled out the application for building, or remodeling permit, because I was told it was. And I just got a letter back today saying that, you know, he thinks it's going to be, you know, more than he thinks it's worth to do that with the parts, because I'm doing all the labor and have friends that are coming to help me do labor. It's only going to be, you know, about $7,500 to $8,000 of parts now that the price of lumber has come back down. And I've got all the tools and stuff to, like I say, lift up the foundation, tear out the parts that are bad, secure them properly, and get it set back down on it. And so I was hoping to get a permit for that so I could start working on it.
So what are you asking of us?
Not to condemn it so I can finish working on it and get approved for remodeling permits so I can finish fixing it.
Okay, so basically you bought this in November of 2020?
Right.
No, in October of 2020.
Okay.
I'm looking at the code information.
And the price of lumber skyrocketed.
Basically, it told you that it was a hazardous structure. The foundation was collapsing and cracking. Roughing siding windows and eaves are dilapidated, no water protection, and electrical issues.
Because of the fire.
It does show that we received a report from the structural engineer.
There's no electricity to it right now because of the fire. They automatically cut it because of serial issues.
The report, although I think you already stated that it did not address the foundation issue.
Right. I just told them, hey, I need a structural integrity report so I can start working on it. The city requires it because it was fire damage.
Okay, so in June of this year, you were issued a citation for the condition of the property. You had a court date set for 7/19, of which you did not appear.
I thought I had appeared.
Not on July 19th, you hadn't. So they reset the court date for August 2nd.
Right. I was working out of town, and I called.
So did you appear for the August 2nd?
Yeah, I spoke to them about this in court.
And how much time do you feel that you need to do this?
Probably have to read it in about six months, because I mean, like I say, I'm doing it myself with friends and as help.
Well, speaking for myself, I don't know that we're going to let this drag on six months. But that's just...
According to these pictures, it looks like you've installed some windows?
No, those are actually installed prior to the fire.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so those new windows I haven't installed. Those were already there. I did redo the back wall before I found out that I needed the permit. So I did, you know, it is, there is a structural wall in the back that's not hurt that way.
And of course, the pictures show nothing of the inside
Correct.
...damage.
And most of the inside damage was smoke damage, except for a little bit of the ceiling in the kitchen, and I believe there was four trusses that needed to be replaced. And I've replaced the outside one, and I've got the other three built to be put in, but I saw they couldn't install them when I spoke to Scott. He said I need to wait for a remodeling permit to in order to do that.
Thought you had a remodeling permit.
I applied for one, and they haven't approved it yet.
So I'm, you're on this list for a reason. I mean, I think you
Right.
should acknowledge the fact that
Yes.
I mean, you're, you know, this is, I mean, what was it? 100 and some odd houses that are on the list or something like that. You're, you've made it up to the top five, which is the bad list, if you will. And you've owned this property for a year. So we did this a year ago when you weren't in that position. We're now on this year's round of houses, and you've owned it for a year, and you've now made it to top five. So what, I guess we're, I'm, I mean, our staff, and I've looked at, I've looked at all these houses and driven by multiple times, and sometimes you have to let something go. And I understand you're trying to do something with this piece of property, but I'm wondering if it's not, they're all, I mean, it's bad. And I think, I don't know that, I don't know if I can give you six more months personally, just for the, for the condition of the house. Because if you're where you are, it's, you're in a, I don't know if there's coming back from it. Because they try to work with everybody. They try, I mean, and we ask, when we start, they give us a list, and we say, you're on the list. We ask them at every meeting, have we heard from any of these people? When we sent out the letter, have we heard from them? No, 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 no. Only last week did we hear that you might be, you might be here. So I'm, I feel like, I feel like the progress, you haven't made any progress in the year that you've owned it. And I'm concerned that you're not going to make progress in six months and get this house to where you can get electric permits. I think that, you know, I don't know if it's us, because I think we're very, we're very lenient in a lot of different ways for homeowners, but your electrical service and your gas service, they're not lenient. And I just think that you're, you're about six months too late, if that makes any sense.
I had been talking to Scott Peachin about this, you know, and, you know, like I said, I did turn in that permit and spoke to him. And it was my mistake, like I said, that I didn't get the permit because
Did you start talking to him after you got the letter?
No, before.
Okay.
So before I got the letter. And then obviously, you know, with the COVID, the skyrocketing price of wood, it was hard to
I get it.
have, have that much extra money put in there. So I was buying it, and I've even got, I've already got roof shingles and tart paper ready, and it's obviously not on it because I didn't have the permit, so.
So your resolutions later on, the meeting tonight, they're drafted for your consideration. You know, you will insert a timeframe. In the past, we've done 30 days. Think of what basically we did 45 days. And within those 30 days, there are commence repairs or demolish the structure. And if that does not occur, that you order demolition?
Commence repair, not complete repair.
Commence repair, as as a satisfaction of your voting official, in that he satisfies that it can be repaired, and there's a plan of action for that.
Would he be able to get a permit within the 30 days?
I think if him and Mr. Peachin talk, and if they can come up with a plan of action, whether there's other code issues with the property, just government, vehicles, other things of that nature as well. But if Mr. Peachin thinks it can be repaired in the method that he proposes, the structural engineer's report, he looked at the burnt area, did not look at the rest of the structure, which Mr. King mentioned. And the photos I've seen of the foundation, I mean, those walls significantly shifted off that foundation. Roof's in very bad shape. Eaves are sagging. It's one of the reasons when a structure that's in this condition is unoccupied, and it's important for us to remove that electrical service, remove that hazard
Right.
from the neighborhood, potentially being flipped and then having it somewhat occupied.
So there's several electrical issues. Do you have any idea what those are?
Just that the electrical was removed because of the fire. Some of the wires in the ceiling burned.
Okay, so they disconnected
Yeah.
So they disconnected the service, so.
And it's been out wasted in fire? The, the structure, you know, going back, and Mr. King was not the owner then, has that issues the city going with this claim?
Yeah, it was declared a hazardous structure in 2019. So question. Say we consider the possibility of 30-day, like you were talking about. Then the way I see it is, well, first of all, Peachin has to go in, right? Scott has to go in and determine whether it's even feasibly possible to rehab this house.
Yeah, the concern is, and do you recall what the county has the value of on the letter that you got today? It's a $1,300 or?
I don't see that.
Such a low value, crazy value of the structure.
Because when I bought it, they came out and I said, oh, it's fire damage. So yeah, so they immediately dropped the value down.
How was the, the structure and the lot? Was $1,300?
Just the structure.
Just the structure, okay. I was going to say, the lot ought to be worth more than $1,300 bucks.
I see a lot more money going into it than it's worth. I really do, Kevin. I mean, as I look at the pictures, I mean, you can see in the pictures where the house is kind of shifted this way, and I look at the rough. Nice windows, I'll give you that, nice windows, but the rough and, and
And like I say, I've got brand-new shingles actually sitting on three full pallets.
Might be cheaper just to build a new, new house there.
I mean, at the end of the day, as we move forward, if we move forward with these resolutions, we'll determine, we can determine what that time, all the resolutions have a timeframe for them to, for the property owner to commence repairs, to bring it up to, up to code, up to. So we would determine what the, what that timeline is to commence repairs, and then each of these property owners, in this case Kevin, or whoever owns these other properties, would have to get with Scott and figure out how they're going to proceed.
And the wording in your resolutions are that they need to diligently prosecute immediate repair or immediate removal. So, and it's up to you guys to consider that timeframe. But clearly, it's been 30 days.
Do you feel that within 30 days, you could make enough progress to
Show that
convince Mr. Peachin that
If I have legal permission to actually do the work I do?
Once you're, once you are issued a remodeled permit?
Yes. Because I already have, like I say, most of the tools. I've already got most of the lumber now. The shingles I have, so I'm, I'm basically just going to putting it all together and, you know, squaring up the house.
You said something about you installed an I-beam?
I know. I have an I-beam to put under the floor.
Oh, you have one, okay.
Jag it up and, you know, take out the crumbling foundation, you know, measure where the new foundation should be, put it in, you know, get it squared up.
It's going to be a lot of work in 30 days if we decide to give it to you.
Well, at the end of the day, this is Scott. I mean, so once we move forward with these resolutions, this will have to go, you know, you'll have to meet with Scott, and Scott will have to determine from a building code perspective if, if, if the plan that you have in place is, isn't enough to salvage the house. So you'll be able to determine at that point. I mean, I appreciate that. I mean, in looking at the list of previous actions on this house, it looks like this is the first time someone's actually
Showed up.
Showed up. So I appreciate that very much. So I think that, you know, from my perspective, as we move through these resolutions, this certainly gives you the guidance and the opportunity then to, or all of these homeowners, the opportunity to sit down with Scott and come up with a plan and execute the plan. So was his permit on hold because, for this, for this?
Yeah, for more I was talking, correct, with a long permit with old, more complex stuff on the home, not the foundation, or the application for the permits.
Right. It was basically, you know, I asked Scott what I needed. He said you need a remodeling permit. And so that's, that's what I applied for, because that's what I was looking to. So if I need another different type of permit, I just need to know so I can go out and pick one properly.
I think in discussion with Mr. Peachin, he's going to want to understand how the foundation, the roof is going to need to be addressed, the electrical, all these things other than deciding the wall.
So all these five properties, if we vote to condemn them, they still have 30 days to respond to the condemnation? Or is our action tonight it?
No, they always come one more time.
They have 30 days to either start fixing it
All of them, all five of them.
Or tear it down.
Or condemn them, and then we vote to tear them down.
So if we vote on this particular property to give him 30 days, we're already giving him 30 days.
Yes. Right, then I think it's the big deal is that he can't, he hasn't been able to get his permit. Yeah, I mean, the resolution says, if the owner fails to commence or the repair or removal of the structure within the time stated, or fails to diligently prosecute the same until the work is completed, said governing body will cause the structure to be raised and removed. So, I mean, we're, these, these resolutions give the property owner the opportunity to either tear it down themselves or fix it to the standards
He can't get it done in 30 days, but
Just says he has to commence.
Diligently commence.
Diligently, diligently, Kevin.
Diligently is there. So if work starts, say, 30 days from, and then two months go by and nothing's happened, we come back to you and say
Here we go. It hasn't fulfilled this part. That's my question. Yeah, and that's why I was reading that.
If the structure can be permitted for repair.
Diligently prosecute.
Okay.
So, I mean
And who makes that call?
Scott.
Scott. Or any of us, I guess, too, any of us drive by.
Since there is so much he's got to do to this property, does he need an engineer stamp?
He's got, he's got one on the burnt side, and it talks about how to repair that portion of the building.
Correct.
So him and Mr. Peachin will discuss the rest of the structure.
And also, I think 624 was just sold, and somebody's actively clearing that property for you, so.
Yeah.
We're not voting tonight to tear down your house. We're going to tear down your house tomorrow. No, I appreciate that, because like I said, this, at least you showed up. I mean, clearly looking at the list, previous owner, owner wasn't, didn't show up, so. But you also have to understand the other person, only other person in four years that have come, come in front of us when we gave them 45 days, still didn't do anything, and we ended up tearing it down.
But you also have to understand the other person, only other person in four years that have come, come in front of us when we gave them forty-five days, still didn't do anything and we ended up tearing it down, so. That's why I'm saying you're on the bad list that you.
Like I say, I, I've got plans that, you know, for lifting the house to get the foundation out, put in, you know, structural foundation, so.
Don't go too deep.
What's that?
Don't go too deep.
No.
I appreciate you coming and talking to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Can I close the public hearing for the condemnation concerning three twenty West One Avenue? Under old business, we don't have anything, so I'll move on to item number fifteen. Consideration of a motion authorizing the purchase and installation of an ultraviolet disinfection system for the water reclamation facility.
So the city commission, the ultraviolet disinfection system is in essence the last treatment process for the water reclamation facility. As water comes out of the plant, runs through a channel where it's ran underneath a. Ultraviolet light and that light kills only any remaining E. coli or any other bacteria that may exist in the light. These lights serve a pretty good useful life, but this light has been, this system rather, has been in place for, I believe, since the beginning. Of the plant's existence, which was about two thousand and seven. So in lieu of having a period where the UV light is, we're down with that one, we'd like to have an authorization to get this one replaced. So we can be able proactive on the maintenance of this piece of equipment. Let's see, the, the system will cost a hundred and eight, nine thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. Which is out of the super fund budget, and we have the funds to do that. And you will, the fund will still be in compliance with our policy, reserve policies and everything. So that, I would take any questions that you have. Incidentally, we do have a sixteen week lead time with equipment, which is another reason why we wanted to. Get this in front of you now, because it does take quite a while to get this thing ordered and then. Go together and then finally deliver it, especially in, in the current world where we have supply line challenges would be, again, proactive to take that into consideration.
You ready for a motion?
I, I got, what is SCADA?
SCADA?
SCADA.
So I don't know what the acronym actually stands for, but it's basically a communication system that allows. The plant to communicate with operators that may be off site, so a lot of our booster pump stations or lift stations are attached to SCADA. And then that will communicate if there's an error or there's an overrun, that our operator can log on and they can determine, is it something that needs immediate attention to the plant? Or can they do something via remote application?
Okay, because it was, it's listed a couple times in this proposal and that's why I wasn't sure what that was. It's excluded a couple times in it. And is freight, is ocean with CTV, I mean, we ordered, is this an overseas part, is that?
I believe that it is.
Okay.
An overseas.
I mean, okay, I'm just trying to understand what we're. We're replacing something that's worked for a very long time, it's one. Thirty year part.
Time to take a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Environmental Process Equipment Company. For the purpose of a UV disinfection upgrade at the wetlands and the water reclamation facility.
Second, motion is second, is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Gen item number sixteen, consider, consideration of a resolution. Of findings concerning the proposed condemnation of six twenty-four North Atchison Street. So. I'm gonna, we're gonna kind of go through all these gen items together. We could have a motion, we can kind of put them all into one motion. If there's any adjustments, I would say if there's any adjustments, the stand, to the standard thirty day timeframe of the resolution that any of each want to make, we need to discuss that ahead of time. As we make the motion, but until then, I'm gonna go ahead and read through these so that we, we can prepare for the motion. So gen items number sixteen through twenty. Is consideration of resolution of findings concerning the proposed condemnation of six twenty-four North Atchison. Five thirteen West Fifth, five nineteen West Fifth, eight fourteen North Railroad Street and three twenty West One Avenue. So, whenever somebody wants to read a lot, there's a motion to be had, to consider all of these.
Okay, so you want to approve the resolution, approve, approve a resolution?
So, and if you look at, in the packet on, on the.
Are we just gonna read each, you want to read each one of them?
There's five different numbers.
All right, there's five different numbers, but you can do it all in one motion.
Oh, okay, approved resolution number.
Can we do it all in one motion or do we have to?
Honestly, it'd be easier if we just do one after.
One at a time, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The property on West Tuwanda. This will give him the thirty days. In those thirty days, is he going to be able to get the paperwork that he needs from the city? To show that he's starting to do what we expect of him?
That's up to what he's proposing and effort he's gonna make to bring the building up to code.
Okay, so.
Like, you know. If, if a permit is requested to re-sign the home. Well, we wouldn't offer as a permit because the condition of the home and the roof and the foundation. So there needs to be a permit, a plan of action for each code violation, or each thing that needs to be brought up. To a minimum housing standard, local building.
Okay, so basically the next thirty days he has a lot of footwork to do. Okay.
So we can actually make the motion in a second and then continue the next motion in a second and then vote on all of them at the end if we want to as well, so what, tell me.
So what I would do is I would make a motion in a second on item sixteen, vote.
Okay.
Motion seventeen, seventeen, seven.
Okay, so, gen item number sixteen, condemnation of six twenty-four North Atchison Street.
I move to approve that resolution number two nine two seven. That a structure at six twenty-four North Atchison is unsafe. Or dangerous and directing the structure to be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Gen item number seventeen, condemnation of five thirteen West Fifth Avenue.
I move to approve the resolution number twenty-eight thirty-four, that a structure at five thirteen West Fifth is unsafe or dangerous. And directing the structure to be removed or repaired, repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Gen item number eighteen.
I move to approve the resolution number twenty-eight thirty-five, that a structure at five nineteen West Fifth is unsafe or dangerous. And directing the structure to be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second, motion is second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Gen item number nineteen, eight fourteen North Railroad Street.
I move to approve resolution twenty-nine twenty-eight, this, that a structure at eight fourteen North Railroad is unsafe and dangerous and directing the structure to be repaired. Or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Gen item number twenty, three twenty West One Avenue.
I move to approve the resolution number twenty-eight thirty-seven, that a structure at three twenty West Tuwanda is unsafe or dangerous. And directing the structure to be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Gen item number twenty-one, consideration of a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Bell. We have some projects that have been finished off and the assessments have been previously gone through the necessary procedure there. And so it is time to finance the projects. And those are four projects, there are paving projects on Douglas, Martin and Oil Hill, and then a fire line for the Union Tank Project and also a fire drug acquisition. So those are the projects for permanent financing, at the same time, the city has the opportunity to refinance its previously existed bonds. The series two thousand and eleven bonds for interest cost savings, the, the market is, is a good time, interest rates are still. Low, and so the city can, can basically save some money by refinancing that prior bond issue. And so the resolution that you have before you tonight basically directs city staff as well as Gilmore and Bell and the city's financial advisor Baker Tilly. To take all actions necessary to sell bonds, the bond sale would be scheduled for next month. At which time the city would receive bids and presumably, assuming conforming bids were received and everything goes as expected. Worth a bid for the sale of the bonds in a little bit. But this resolution that you have here before you tonight directs all that to happen.
So we're refinancing three point three?
Yeah, there's three point three for, in the outstanding principle of the series two thousand and eleven bonds, they're callable. Which means that the city can take those bonds off the market at the interest rates, at a lower interest rate on the refunding bonds than you're paying on the refunded bonds. Bonds typically have something called a call feature, it's typically between eight to ten years, where for that first time period, they're not callable, which means you can't take them off the market. We've now reached the call period, ten years after the issuance, where they can be called and just refunded. And so basically we're just saving money on the interest that you pay for the remaining life of those bonds.
How long are they for, how much is, what's the term that's left?
I believe it's, there's about eight years left on that, I'd have to look, it's between eight and ten, I do believe. I think it's, it was a.
So.
So that savings of thirty-four thousand a year, that's gonna end up being about a quarter million dollars.
I, so that, I don't have the present, the, the present savings estimate, I do know that. When looking at the number run for Baker Tilly, the, what we usually measure it as, as is, it's called present value calculation. Meaning that, okay, you're going to save X percent of the principal of these bonds by refinancing them, but we predict. Anything above three to four, especially five percent gets to be worth doing from an industry standpoint, point of view. Baker Tilly's latest number run has had a ten percent present value savings, so basically you're, you're saving ten percent of the principal on the bonds by refinancing them at a lower interest rate.
So that's substantial.
It was forty, it was forty thousand dollars or so a year is what you gave us last week.
This is thirty-four here.
Oh, okay.
On the refinancing part.
Yeah.
So, take that times eight, that's about a quarter million dollars. Worth doing.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's not gonna extend the years anymore, we're just changing the interest rate.
Yeah, because they're, they're callable and so everything else remains the same, you just pay less money, you're financing your house for a lower interest rate is what it boils down to.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-nine twenty-nine. Authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, series. Twenty twenty-one A of the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Seeing you.
Proud to see you in the episode.
That's right. All right, so next item on the, we don't have anything for discussion, so we're gonna move on to city commission advisory board updates, we'll start with you, Commissioner Mark.
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing.
On October fifteenth, the K T fifty-four Corridor Development Association will be meeting at the Civic Center here in El Dorado and. The KTA engineer, Glenn Scott, will be giving a presentation on the current. KTA projects that are going on right now and the new ones that will be coming up. And that will be on October fifteenth at, from eleven thirty to one o'clock. El Dorado Week doesn't meet October twenty-first and on the eighteenth of October, I will not be here, I'll be in Washington DC, so. I won't be here for our next meeting.
Hopefully it's fine.
Yeah, hopefully.
I, I, I got to emcee the homecoming parade Friday, that was really nice to see, there was forty, forty-two entries, so just goes to show that we are a parade town. We love a good parade and there was quite a few people out there, so it was really good to see that continue on. The, the boys fought hard, I think that was ninety-nine points was scored in a high school football game last Friday, we didn't, we didn't come out on top, but that was. It was, I've never seen that many touchdowns in that stadium, so I was, it was, it was an interesting, good day last, on Friday. I don't have anything in general, specifically, but I just wanted to. I just want to acknowledge something that I, I kinda feel like we've, we, we haven't quite acknowledged that's going on in our community right now and I'm not. I'm not gonna use this as a pulpit for anything other than the fact that we've lost a lot of people in town over the last few months and. And I, and whether whoever's opinion or how, how things have gone, it's, we, we have lost quite a few of our citizens and our brothers and sisters. These last ninety days or so, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. These people have left behind families and I just want to make, we just need to get out there and make sure that we touch base with these people on a regular basis. And let them know that they're not alone and that they're not going through such a hard time by themselves, because that's what this town is about. And so I know that, that some losses, some of these deaths have changed people's minds about certain things that are going on and. Whether it's good or bad, at least. I just wanted to make, just at least acknowledge that, that we've, we've lost some, we've lost some people and some age groups that we should be losing people at, so. That's all I got.
I appreciate that. So I've got a couple of things, so I was invited, so this weekend, the International Alpha Delta Capa Sorority for Women Teachers. Had their Kansas Upsilon Chapter seventieth birthday at our senior center and I was invited to. Go and say good morning and welcome, welcome the group to, to El Dorado for that. It was a lot of fun, I got to see a lot of teachers that, that unfortunately hadn't, had, got an opportunity to teach me when I was growing up and so I don't know how they felt about that, but it was really great to see a lot of them. And we've, I forwarded a proclamation to David to, to, to recognize our teachers, our, our women teachers in this Alpha Delta Capa sorority for their seventieth. Seventieth birthday again in, in El Dorado's chapter, so I think we're gonna be reviewing that on the eighteenth. So, it was a lot of fun, it was great to have them there and, and, you know, we really do appreciate. All the work that our teachers do throughout, throughout all of our communities. A couple of things, we got a letter from Congressman Estes, I wanted to read for the record and for the public, says, dear Mayor Young and members of the El Dorado City Council. Congratulations on the recent. Sesquicentennial. Yes, celebration of the city of El Dorado. El Dorado has a long and rich heritage of milestones and success that is celebrated throughout the country and the state. From the mid to late eighteen hundreds through twenty twenty-one, El Dorado has led the way in the oil industry, rail transportation industry, healthcare, K twelve public education, higher education. And of course is the seat of Butler County. On behalf of the fourth district of Kansas, I congratulate the residents of the city of El Dorado on this momentous hundred and fiftieth anniversary and best wishes. For continued growth and success in the next hundred and fifty years, so, I thought that was a nice letter to receive from, from Congressman Estes. We also have the League of Kansas Municipalities and I want to make sure that this information is forwarded on to the schools. The League of Kansas Municipalities would like to inform you about an annual contest that their organization hosts called the My City, My Home Essay Contest. Seventh graders across Kansas can write about and explore what they enjoy about their community and what makes their city special. The contest is an amazing chance for students to be civically engaged and explore the different ways they can actively participate in community change. We're gonna help promote this essay contest to seventh graders in our city, both USD four ninety and three seventy-five. The winners will be invited to attend and receive their award at Local Government Day in January of two thousand and twenty-two. Each regional winner and the statewide winner will receive a cash prize. The details can be found at the League of Kansas Municipalities website at www.lkm.org/essaycontest. So, some ideas for us, maybe to help get this word out to our, to our students. So, some ideas for us, maybe to help get this word out to our, to our students, we could schedule some school visits to talk about what we do as commissioners or on this commission, and kind of our role in local government. I feel like we maybe should try to invite some students to our next city commission meetings, or the next couple of city commission meetings, and give them opportunities to see what we do. It would also give us a little bit of a crowd in here, which we don't have often. You know, David, I would reach out to, to the, to the school district offices, encourage field trips, give them a chance to get out of the classroom, come down and check out city hall. You know, we've got some really awesome facilities at our, at our utility departments, public works departments, our water department, I mean, all these, there's great places for field trips. Fire department, police department, I think there's some real opportunities there if we could encourage that. But we do need to get ahold of both superintendent and our principals to let them know about this, and I'll pass this information along to you as well, there's some flyers in here from them. This is a chance to make a connection with the youth in our community, and to reinforce the importance of local government. I think it's incumbent on us to help encourage further support in this, and see what we can do, so. I wanted to just share that, and like I said, I'll get you the information from the league, and we'll kind of roll from there, but that's all I've got, so, city managers report.
So, I've been reporting to the commission the last couple of months on sales tax, so I just wanted to say that the trend continues. For the previous month, September, which is sales tax on retail sales occurring in July, we brought in two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, which is based on twenty-five point seven million dollars in retail sales. Based upon twelve, a twelve-month rolling average, we are projected to break last year's record, which, so right now, we're projected to bring in two point nine million dollars, which would break last year's record by nine point eight percent. Last year, we brought in two point six million dollars, so keep shopping local, it is, we're definitely seeing it at the city, and it's going to allow us to do some pretty cool things next year, specifically with excess sales tax, because if we bring in two point nine million dollars, well, about half a million dollars in excess sales tax, we can, we can do something with it. So, that's, that's extraordinary. Part of that money is, part of that money comes from what we call compensating use tax, which is not necessarily online sales, although that can be part of it. Compensating use tax compensates the state and the cities for otherwise lost sales tax dollars that occur in several scenarios. Kansas legislature enacted destination sourcing, meaning merchandise materials and services that are taxed at the location, such as items that are received instead of where, I'm sorry, that are taxed at the location instead of where they are received. So, for example, if you purchase a washing machine outside El Dorado, that's delivered to El Dorado, then we receive compensating use tax for that purpose, even if it was purchased somewhere else. And so, our compensating use tax for sales in July came out to forty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Year-to-date, we brought in three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is forty-three percent higher than the prior year. So, there are a lot of compensating use tax purchases, and when you look at that number compared to prior years, it's definitely a lot different than prior years as well. So, I think that's, you know, people are at home, they're buying things, and they're being delivered here, so we get the benefit of the compensating use tax in that scenario.
But if they haul, if the purchaser hauls it themselves, we don't get that, right?
That's correct. Yeah, if it's a point of sale that occurs, like for example, in Wichita, I buy a couch in Wichita, but then I just throw it back in my truck, and I drive it here, I'm gonna pay retail sales tax in Wichita, and then, that's, that's all she wrote. But if I buy it in Wichita and they deliver it here, then we pay compensating use tax.
So, best-case scenario is we just buy our appliances here in El Dorado. Saves hassle, saves time.
That is correct, yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Sure is.
So, we just need furniture in El Dorado, too.
One thing I did want to share with you all is the Government Finance Officers Association recently presented the city a distinguished budget presentation award, this is budget, actually a budget, I'm gonna add, well, yeah. In order to receive the budget, we prepare a budget document that meets program criteria, such as policy document, its financial plan, as an operations guide, and as a communications device, the budget is sent off to the program, and then they have three peers review it, and those could be finance directors from other cities, or budget analysts, or whatever, they provide feedback to us, and then write it, and based upon that, we get scored, and so we receive the award again, and I don't know how many years we've received the budget award, it's not as long as the compensation report, but that's because the budget presentation award is not as old as that, but we have received it for several consecutive years in the last. The Parks and Recreation Department continues its work on the New River View Playground, if you haven't been out to it, you might go check that out, it's a twenty-four-foot structure, the slide is not yet completed, part of the reason for that is because we're waiting on mulch, and once the mulch has been delivered, they can get that installed, and then they can finish the slide, and then we'll open it up. So, it's a pretty, pretty impressive feature, and that is being funded entirely from, not economic, but excess sales tax proceeds, so, again, that's at River View Park, and so you know, you can check that out. And I think that's all I have for that.
I got one question for you, and I don't know if you could answer it. Landlord relief for people that are living in houses that are not paying their rent because of COVID, is there anything out there for the landlords to recoup?
Yes, so the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation is responsible for administering the landlord tenant program through the state of Kansas, and so I believe that link is on our website, but if it's not, we can make sure that it is, so folks can get that permission and apply.
I was asked that today, and I said I didn't know, so I thought I'd ask you. Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask for some clarification on the home condemnation? Just occurred to me, we talked about the thirty days, but was, was that the intent?
Yes, yeah.
Of y'alls vote, just for the record, to clarify.
I thought that was part of the.
The, the resolution.
None of us ever said.
We didn't say the resolution was left blank, all the resolutions were left blank, it's thirty days.
I agree with thirty days.
Yeah, I thought it was part of the resolution.
Clarified.
Well, yeah, I mean, if he can't show due diligence in thirty days.
Yeah, so on all of them.
Yes, yeah, that's, do we need to redo that?
I think you're good. We have a record, you guys just said.
Okay, okay. We don't have an executive session tonight, so I consider a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thanks all, have a good night.